Can I turn these on?
Turn on.
No.
Mine is. Is yours on?
Oh, no.
You got it. Yep, there you go. All right. Hi, good evening, everyone, and welcome to our July Village Board meeting. If you could please rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance with us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
We start our -- there's an agenda in the back. If you didn't have an opportunity to get one, they're on the table right back there. We start with our staff reports for this evening. And I'm going to start with tonight, the Eltumont Fire Department. And Chief Paul Miller is going to come up to the microphone.
Good evening, everybody.
Can you turn that on?
Paul? Wait, Paul, can you turn that on? Slide the button. Did you get it?
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, a few things to go over. I didn't get on the chief's report. The old E-107 is out of service. The VRS is going to be taking it this week to mount the tools that are on there onto the new truck, which is now in town. Just so you guys know also, if we were to order that engine that we did a year ago today, we're looking at a million dollars. So, we got it for $684. That's how much the prices have gone up in a year. Movies in the park, we've picked one night so far for August 25th. Don't know the movie title yet, but we'll get that out there as soon as we do. And we're going to be planning a fall movie in the firehouse here later, probably September or early October. So, a while ago, we talked about doing a study for a new firehouse. And as some of you know, we've been working on that with Dan and Elizabeth from CS Arch. So, at this point, I'd like to turn around and show you a couple of proposed or the proposed new firehouse and give you guys a heads up and any questions you may have for it.
Yeah, let's -- Paul, can we put the board here and we'll move over there? Is that okay?
I'm just going to get started too with a couple, a couple of things before we show you the, where the design is. And tonight was really just intended to be an update of where we are in this process. We came on about a year ago to just study the existing station, study what potentially could happen here, if it made sense to try to renovate this space, or what the other options might be. We still owe a final report of this current facility, which obviously houses more than just the fire department. But some of the things that we typically look for when we are designing fire departments and renovating them are several things. And there are several limitations to this site that I just wanted to bring up. Certainly, one of the biggest ones is there's limited space on this site for building expansion, knowing that the flood plain is right here, which unfortunately has been tested recently. The fire department certainly has outstripped their, the available space without being able to take over space, obviously, from other departments within the building as well, which are already short on space. One of the biggest and most notable things, if you're in that station, in that space, the floor of the apparatus bay has cracked. Tried to make structural repairs to those, that really has been unsuccessful in resolving the problem. So, with the weight of those trucks, it continues to be an issue that really can't get resolved or has not been resolved. Really are not enough apparatus bays to handle the, any of the future trucks. I know there's some trucks being considered right now and all of your, all of your equipment to be able to fight fires. So, we really need more space for that as well. Office space is limited. It's shared amongst the officers. It makes, you know, private conversations really challenging. One of the big ones that we see, it's a new requirement of the, of the code, National Fire Protection Code, is the gear lockers are no longer allowed in the bay areas. Obviously, you grandfathered in with a station like this, but if we were to build it in a new building and renovate, they would have to be in a separate space. Additional gear lockers are needed. Apparatus bay doors, for those who drive those trucks, they know how narrow those bay doors are and how limited you are in space in between, in between trucks, which makes just responding to a fire and challenging because you get in the way of one another. And I'm sure Paul can, can add some more detail to this. Storage space is always at a premium and very challenged here. And there's no, really no place for onsite training, other than removing the trucks from the bays, which provides limited, limited training opportunities. One of the other big items is when you back into the apparatus bays, you're blocking 146. I don't know if you're actually on 146 too with the front of the trucks. We've seen that in other stations. Trucks have gotten bigger over time, right? So, so those, we have really found very quickly that the amount of dollars it would take to renovate a space like this into a station that really serves your purposes would probably far outweigh or come close to considering a new station. So, so we have started to look at the possibility of building a new station on a new site. And Elizabeth will come up here and talk about that. One of the things I, I really want to point out too, which makes building a new, a new station even more advantageous, is that it doesn't interrupt your ongoing operations. What we find is that, you know, if you're trying to do a major renovation in an existing station, it takes your existing station out of service. You have to come up with another way to, to house your apparatus and house your facilities. By building a new station, that can all go under, be in construction and complete construction without interrupting any of that. So, have Elizabeth come up, just talk about kind of where we are. It's going to be difficult to see these plans. We'll have them up here. We'll stick around if you want to come up and look at them later and if you have any specific questions.
So, what we've been doing with the new station proposal is there's a piece of property located at the corner of Gun Club Road and Route 146 that the village has introduced us to. It's a 2.8 acre parcel that would very nicely fit a new station. That station is both a combination of firefighting and your EMS in the town. So, it's a whole self-service emergency service facility. I'm going to step away from this just ever so much. So, what we have in the new station is we have apparatus bay doors that are drive-throughs. So, it makes it easier for firefighters to respond to calls and then bring those trucks back into the facility. We have the required gear locker storage, which we've expanded to close to 60 lockers for future growth in the station. We have dedicated firefighter offices and for the line officers and a ready room for firefighters to spend time in, to connect in, to wait for the response. We have a kitchen and a meeting room for training. There are other training opportunities within the apparatus bay through the use of a mezzanine, which would also provide some storage. We usually call that the dead storage for all the files that have to be maintained, items that might not be regularly accessed. We do have a radio room and some other rooms that would be dedicated to the EMS personnel that are onsite and would be staffing the building 24/7. This side of the building here is really primarily though dedicated to your firefighters in the community, while some rooms over on this side of the building and the last apparatus bay would be dedicated to EMS personnel that are in the facility. We do have parking around the building and you'll notice that it's fairly rectilinear. There is a method to that. We are working with Morton Building and other pre-engineered metal building manufacturers to provide a solution to the building that is both attractive. There are a lot of different aesthetic applications that we can apply to these buildings while still maintaining a relatively low cost to the overall building. What you can see on the, the board on your right are some renderings of that, that building. If you were on the corner of 146 and Gun Club Road, this is the view you would see. This is looking at the main entrance into the new station. And then this is that opposite corner if you were to stand back up on Gun Club Road. If you're on 146, you can see this is the elevation that you would look at. We've been looking at some of the design considerations that Eltumont has in your code. So, things like wainscoting, trim detail, dormers are all considerations that we want to include to make this fit in with the rest of the community. And then this last rendering here is the rear entrance, which would mostly be for your first responders. They would be able to enter through that back access into the gear lockers, get dressed for the fire, get on the truck, and then head out to respond to the emergency. So, this is what we've been working with Paul, the chief, and some others on developing and where we are in the process for tonight. Are there any questions, anything to add?
I think that's good for right now. I think, I know Nick and I have been meeting with you and Paul. And we're at this point now, we have some other work to do. I think, I think design-wise, it's going back and forth. We've had some conversations and changed things up and resized things depending on need. Nick, do you have anything to add?
I was going to say, do you want us to go back there and then if people have questions?
Yeah, probably.
Slide that down.
I think so. Yeah, we'll just fly by.
Yeah, I guess the first would be, has anybody, Carrie and I have seen this before. I don't know if anybody else on the board has thoughts, questions?
Yeah, John's not with us tonight, but if you guys have anything.
I don't have any questions or anything. I think the design looks great. I like the concept a lot.
Yeah. It's going to be sent to the board as well, so you'll have it to see. And we'll have it also available to be seen for possibly the website to get up there as soon as we get to a point where we want to, everything's set, you know, with us. Do you have anything else?
No, I mean, I don't know. We're not technically a public comment.
No, no, it's not public comment time or anything like that, but we just wanted to say this is, it goes back a ways. Now, just for folks that aren't generally here, the feasibility study, I want to say, what did we say, a year ago? We started that because we, you know, there was this need. Paul brought it to the board. I think we've been seeing this coming with getting the last couple of trucks, that we just don't have enough room. And this building is, you know, it wouldn't work to renovate. So, this was the, the most cost-effective way to move forward. And this is not something that's going to happen tomorrow or next year. It's going to take some time.
Yeah, actually, I'll go back further. I think, I think this probably started many years ago when we realized that we needed to make some repairs to the building.
Yes.
And we tried to do that and the costs that we were getting were significantly higher than we expected. So, the, the prospect of doing any significant renovations is kind of a nightmare. And then the renovations that we did do were still kind of a nightmare of trying to finish that work. So, I think all that experience plus, you know, taking a look at all the code and think, oh, one thing I wanted to mention, Dan, you were talking about the lockers. And part of the reason for that has to do with safety for the firefighters, right? Is they're potentially collecting carcinogens on the call. You don't want them kind of commingling that. So, it's not just, you want to have a separate room to get dressed, you know, for privacy or modesty or anything like that. It's for safety. So, that's where it comes from. That's why it's entered into the code now for those reasons. So, all that stuff piled on top, I think this is where, where we're looking at. We are still early in the process. Yeah, I think that's about it.
And we've had conversations with the town of Gildan as well, because we co-own that site. And this is something we talked to them about several years ago now, maybe three?
Yeah, probably two or three years ago.
Maybe two, three years ago. So, they are aware, and I know, Paul, you presented at their meeting a year ago as well, to use that site for this purpose, so. Okay, I think that's great. Thank you for coming and explaining and showing. We really, really do appreciate it. Paul, if you want to put that maybe in the back more in case people want to get up and check it out up close, they, you're welcome to do that.
Do you want to leave it up for public comment in case people have questions? Or you want to just leave it until the end of the meeting?
It's up to you guys. If, if there's any questions that people have now that are, you know, we have a few things for public topics tonight, but if there's any questions you have now that you want to?
We can sit around too. If you have questions there.
Okay, that'd be great. Thanks. Yeah. Thanks, guys. Okay. We don't have a police department report tonight, but we'll get to something with the police department a little bit later, a little later in the agenda. Public Works, Jeff. Try to beat that, Jeff. Come on. What are you going to give us now?
Not much.
Okay.
Larry's been working on the lead and copper program. It's been really good. Everybody's cooperating real good.
Can you, I'm sorry, can I interrupt? Can you briefly explain that, just a summary of what he's doing and why we have to do it?
Some of our old lines are either lead or galvanized. And they've started this program nationwide where we have to do a survey this year and next year and then provide it to the state of what we find. Being that it's a village, in the past, the homeowner's been responsible from the water main to their property into their house. Well, they've changed that where it's the municipality's problem now. And we have to inspect the houses. And while we're inspecting each house, we're looking at what kind of water line is coming into their house. And we're also checking the grounding system for their electrical services because in the past, we've had a couple hits on copper, when we've tested for copper. And it's traced back to faulty ground systems in the house. So, he's checking that. He's checking for cross connections between water and, or between the sewer and sump pumps. And just checking valves and stuff like that, so.
I think he said he's going like street by street, putting out notices.
He started up on the hill, but a lot of it because of our records. Like over in the developments, we already know what the material is and we can skip that.
Okay, great.
So, we're concentrating right now on the older part.
Okay.
Let's see. Well, we're due as soon as the rain stops to start patching streets, potholes. Tim has been working down at the sewer plant. He's had some success with polymers and we're getting a lot better settlement with our sludge. So, I think that he'll be able to really help us out a lot in haulage fees. So, that's been working out good. Let's see. I don't know if we're going to get to it this week, but for the next couple of weeks, we're going to be working on changing some valves out on the north side of the village. We've had some problems over there in the past two years. We go to turn the water off and we end up having to turn half the village off because we can't, we keep going from valve back up to another valve, back up to another valve, and till we finally find one that works. And the past two times, the valves that we've turned off, we open them back up and they start leaking and we've had to go back and dig them up and work on them. The last one was on the corner of Maple and Western. That was quite a project. We had to jackhammer through two feet of blacktop and then got down to an older valve where the top bolts had rotted off and we had to rebuild that. But we ended up dropping probably half the village. Didn't have to take them out completely, but we had to drop pressure. If we had a water main break, we would have had to everybody out.
Right.
So, that's where we stand right now.
Okay. Any questions for Jeff? No? I think we're good. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Jeff.
We're going to the treasurer part. And can I get a motion to approve the abstract amending the bottom portion, the loan from general to water fund? We're going to amend and take that off for the night, but approve the abstract and vouchers for this month. Can I have a motion for that? Michelle is first and second.
I'll second.
Tressa is second. And roll call, please.
Trustee Mitchell is?
In favor.
Trustee Ginnan?
In favor.
Trustee Farron call?
In favor.
In favor. Next part of our agenda is a public comment. If you have something you want to share with the board, I will ask you if you have something to share about the keeping of chickens in the village. Can you just hold on to agenda item number one because that's next? So, we'll just keep it separate. So, we're doing that all together. But if you have something else you'd like to share, please come up to the microphone and just introduce yourself. Oh, one more thing from Jeff first.
I didn't write it down.
It's okay.
I just want to mention with flooding that we've had all around us here. We've had some heavy flow in our creeks and we're still getting people throwing yard waste, branches, grass in our creeks. And it, you don't think it is much, but it builds up. That's the less heavy storm we had. I was checking creeks down on Brandle Road and there's a great big pile of fresh grass stuck it. You know, it doesn't take much. If three or four people are throwing things in there, get some branches. And next thing you know, a culvert will plug up and then it comes over the road and we start losing roads and causing property damage. So, you know, if we pick it up for free, try to keep it out of the creeks.
Is this something we can maybe, could you put a nixle out talking about with the water, the flooding, you know, the waters and the creeks being full? Could you please make sure we're not throwing things into?
Sure.
Because otherwise, I mean, we're saying it here and a lot of people do watch this, but I think it would be, a nixle goes pretty directly to everybody's house.
Yeah.
Some informational nixle that way.
And also, if, you know, if you see something in the creek, pick it up.
Sure.
Just pull it up on the bank and get it out for us. Or if you see a tree down, let us know.
Sounds good. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Anybody else have something for public comment? That's not chickens. Hi, Kate.
I did have a couple of questions about the presentation.
Sure.
Because I hadn't seen that on the agenda. And so, it caught me off guard. I had heard rumblings in the village that there was a plan going on. So, I just had a couple of questions about what are the next steps? And when does the public get to comment and have more information about this?
Do you want to address, since you've been working with them?
Sure. I don't think we have any next steps. Unfortunately, the village doesn't have a couple of million dollars lying around to do this.
I was wondering about that.
We really don't.
Unfortunately, we checked.
Okay.
So, what, what the purpose of this engagement that we hired CS Arch to do about a year ago was, A, look at the current station. What would it take, you know, for it to last another 40, 50 years, right? Because some of us, you know, we want to have the fire department be around for that long as we have to think long-term. If that wasn't an option or if that was going to be cost prohibitive, what would be the options for building a new station? And again, like Dan was saying, weighing the pros and cons. So, they've done that study. They've looked at some of the parcels that we have around here. Again, we have joint ownership of that parcel land at the corner of Gun Club and 146. So, they tried to see, you know, what could fit in there and it does. And so, what we'd like to be able to do is to use this plan as. Yeah, I was going to say blueprint, but it's technically not a blueprint. It's probably a term of art, so.
Like a stepping, a jumping off point to continue the discussion.
Sure, like a, like a foundation for applying for funding, yeah.
And part of it is too, when we go and we want to talk to, say, some of our elected officials that might be able to help us or point us towards grants, it's good to have something that we can show them, like this is what we're trying to do. Eventually, we'll have an idea, a firm idea of this is what it's going to cost and then start piecing that together. In terms of formal feedback, you know, we can probably put something on the agenda, like we have a discussion about keeping of the chickens. We could have a discussion on the firehouse, you know, at a future meeting. This again was part of Paul's report. He brought a couple of his friends with him.
Just a couple.
So, good to see you guys. But no, I, I think that's where it is. We did not hire CS Arch to actually plan the building. It was limited engagement to scope out what it might look like, what it might cost, what are our options? Because again, we didn't have a ton of funding to be able to do much more than that. So, it's still very early.
Yeah, so, thank you for that, Nick. I also want to say how much I do appreciate our fire department. I absolutely do. I am concerned about making, because there had been rumblings and I don't think it was clear on the agenda that the plan was going to be presented, you know, that, that so far the study, feasibility study was going to be, I think we run the risk of folks finding out second, third, fourth hand and not, and wondering about it and not supporting it. So, I hate to see that happen. It also is, it, you know, it's contrary to the plan that was put together last fall for the grant that Eltumont applied for, where that space was going to be used for something else. So, it feels like mixed information, so.
I'll just come on that one too. We had been talking with, with Dan and Paul. We do still intend to have some space carved out on that plot for museum in the streets, have some sort of memorial towards the history that happened there. So, that, that is.
That, I mean, so all of that is really helpful information to put out there so that people don't start to make judgments about it without having all of the details, which I think has gotten us in trouble before.
Well, and I think like what Nick just said, I mean, this is part of Paul's report tonight. This is what he's been working on with them. Nick and I did meet with them a couple of times as well as a group, just to look at, you know, feasibility study, where we're at, and this is what we're suggesting otherwise. And again, it will be a discussion for the public at some point. And we, you know, we've been always good about that. But, um, yeah, it wasn't planned, but it was just kind of, he's updating the board. Basically, it was updating the board at where we're at, you know? So, they, they had not seen anything.
I've been hearing that there might be an update in the July meeting for at least six weeks. So, I think it's out there.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Thanks.
Anybody else? Okay, I'm not seeing any more movement, so I'm going to move on to the, or do I have? No, okay. So, I'm going to move on to agenda, agenda item. Number one, we put on our agenda site the discussion on keeping chickens in the village. And I'm going to give a little back summary so everyone's understanding where, where we're at. This is not something the board is, I heard a comment earlier, the board doesn't want this. We've heard this twice in the last, I guess, three years. And we even went so as far as drafting a law a few years ago. And then no one showed up to support that law. So, not one person did. And then we had another situation where we were looking at it about a year ago, I think. It's, time gets away from me. And it didn't come to fruition. So, there just hasn't been the follow-through on the community's part. And we've been, you know, we've been wanting to hear anyone's thoughts on this. But, so Kathy Glass, I hope you don't mind if I throw your name out there. You were at the last meeting. And she came up and asked us about having chickens in the village. She thought it had passed at one time. And just talked to the board about it briefly. What can we do to possibly, you know, have this discussion in public? And I said, well, why don't we get together? I said, I'd meet with you and then we would discuss it at this meeting. And it's really a meeting not, you know, the strengths and weaknesses or with, if you will, about having chickens. And I don't want to argue about chickens. It's, we want to know if people want the legislation to move forward because there is a process. So, the process would be if we feel there's enough of an interest. And I think we received several letters today from residents of the village. And that's what's really important to me as well, that we got several positive letters on that today. I would think the interest is there. They want to go forward with that. But what we would do then is take this next month or so to, we had a committee who drafted a law for this a few years ago, based on many other chicken ordinances and surrounding municipalities. And maybe tweak it, look at it, tweak it, and bring that back in September, which at that time, the public would get to see it. The board would then say, okay, we like this. Do we want to amend something? We would then set a public hearing for it for October. And then that is where the public would come out and just give us, you know, yea or nay on the, you know, your side to that topic. And we can either pass or not move forward with the law, depending on what we hear. So, you know, I guess my, my interest tonight is if you are, if you think this is a great idea, please come up and you could just tell us you think you're a village resident and you would love to see this go forward and then we can start the process. And I think, I don't know if I'm explaining all of it, but I was explaining to Kathy when we met, it's hard because as you know, there is a monetary value to everything we do. I don't know if everybody understands that every time you have to do a new local law, it costs the village quite a bit of money and time to do that. We have to, you know, draft it. We have to run it by village council. She has to check on certain things. So, it's a, it's time-consuming and it's, there's a financial impact. So, it's not that I wasn't interested in doing it and saying, yes, Kathy, we'll, we'll do it next time, no matter what. But we have to make sure there's more than just one person who would, has interest in something. And I hope you can understand that. Otherwise, we're wasting taxpayer money and every single person could have their own individual want or need. So, I just want to, if you have, you know, a statement that you would, you know, you're a village resident, you want to come up and speak to us and tell us how you feel about us going forward with this legislation, we would love to hear it. You can come up to the microphone.
Hi, I'm Bianca. I've had chickens for three years. Here are some good things about chickens. They lay eggs, they eat the bugs and ticks out of your yard. You can feed them kitchen scraps so you don't have to waste food.
Thank you very much. That's great. Appreciate that.
Any questions?
No, not questions yet, but for the public hearing, you'll be one of our resources, I bet. Does anybody else want to come up and talk like Bianca did? Thank you very much. Extra points for the outfit. I know, isn't it awesome?
That's great. So, I'm Kathy Glass, 100 Bozenkill Road. I'm the one who I guess started this whole ball rolling. I was here last month, expressed interest in having the ordinance passed. I'm still here. I did speak with Carrie and offered my services. I would be happy to help your committee if it does move forward and you would like help. I've done extensive research with the Ag and Markets Field Vet on, you know, a number of things. There are ways to. There are ways to raise chickens in a safe, healthy manner, both for the birds and for the environment and for the community. And I really do think they would be a positive addition. So if there's anything I can do to help move this along. Okay?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And thank you to anybody else who came out.
And we did receive, like, I think, I don't know the count, but probably four or five residential letters all supporting us moving forward with this legislation. Hello.
Good evening. My name is John Polk. I'm a village resident. I'm very much in favor of having chickens in the village. I was one of the people who was involved a year or so ago. And at that time, we had circulated a petition using change.org where many village residents and other folks who have interests in the community had signed. And I had, I think, deposited with the town at the time. I have another copy. Some other people had signed previously. Subsequently, we have over 200 signatures. So there's definitely interest.
Okay.
And if anyone else is interested to sign, I'll, I guess.
You can leave it with the clerk if you want.
Sure, I'll do that.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Could be yea or nay. Don't be afraid.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Edelson. I'm a resident here in Altamont. I was here last year. And I thought, as I had the conversation, you asked about interest. And it seemed like there was a lot of interest. It sounded like it was moving forward. And so this is very curious to me that we're now a year later. And it's like, hey, doesn't, it sounds like, you know, we had the change petition. We had a lot of these things. So I'll say, I can tell you, I don't know if I, in my community, that there's a lot of people who are very interested in this. And I'm not sure that they're aware of that change petition. And they're sort of, again, a year ago, they think, oh, we thought this thing would happen. We're wondering why it still hasn't happened. And understand, there's things to be left. I've also come from lots of different communities. I've had the opportunity, or fortunate or misfortunate, grew up in a lot of places where actually we've had free range chickens. And this is in urban environments where it's been very beneficial. It's been very happy, as you said, as you mentioned. It helps with ticks. It helps with infestation. And it's generally, they're generally actually very docile and easy to happen where they're, they can be in any different types of environments. So I'm happy to do whatever it is. Let's say, go get it. And I don't, I hope we, you know, all due respect, hoping to have to come back here because we've got it. We've got the problem solved. So thank you very much.
Thank you. She's back.
She's back.
I think I forgot to say my name last time. I'm Kate Proventur. Actually, this is what I thought I would be standing up for. I am supportive of this work. I was on the committee that helped to draft the regulation. And I also am chagrined that it hasn't passed yet. I think, I also think that the last three years of the pandemic has shown that people have an interest in being able to grow their own food and be more organic. And that being able to keep chickens in a village is part of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Hey, Maury.
Hey, how are you?
Good.
Yeah, I'm very much in favor of chickens. And I don't understand why we don't have them yet. I actually am fortunate enough to own property in Gilderlin. So I've had chickens for the last year or so. On that property, I would go over there and I would always have a tick on me, at least one or two. My dogs would and everything. This year, I don't even think about ticks when I go over there because they're just not there anymore. I have 12. And I let them free range. And if you keep them in a coop, I mean, I don't want to go on about chickens, but it's not bad. But once they know where they live, then you let them out. And as soon as this time when the night comes, they all go back in. You don't even, I mean, they're not wandering down the street or anything. So it's extremely beneficial. My grandchildren absolutely love them. I think it's great for that. And I don't, I, does the board want to comment on what is the downside? I know this isn't a give and take.
No, no, we're not looking for downside. I just wanted to hear people's feelings. Because again, we were happy to move forward two times before. And it just, things weren't followed through on, not on our end. But I just, so we couldn't move forward when we didn't have support for it.
I don't remember all the details. But again, we basically did the public hearing.
We did.
We were ready to vote on it. Or during the public hearing, people came up. And the only people that spoke said things like, well, if you allow chickens, then there's going to be foxes that are going to be going after the chickens. And then they're going to go after your children. And like, it was just lots of different things, right? Maybe that was maybe a comical example. But all we heard were people who thought it was a terrible idea.
Yeah, that was all that came in. So it didn't move forward.
My personal feelings, it's like, man, everybody that came out didn't want chickens. So it was hard to.
That had to be three years ago.
That was three years ago.
That was ginger who made those comments. I was here. Hey, I'll call out whoever. You can call me out, too.
Well, there was more than one person, but there.
But anyway.
Honestly, there was no support.
There was only one negative thing about it. And I do not have a problem with snakes or rodents. The key, and I'm sure you would address that, is to keep your feed locked up and secure. So the mice or rats or whatever don't just come over and eat everything that spilled on the ground.
And there are ways to mitigate those issues. There are things that people can purchase to make sure they're varmit proof for feed and things like that.
Oh, yeah. And that's, that's a key.
That would be part of the draft that we put together. Because it was last time.
Yeah, I would assume it would. Because everybody around here allows chickens. So I'm sure the information's out there.
It is.
On how to do it right.
Yeah.
And.
I think Kate can tell you, we looked at a lot of surrounding municipalities when we did that. We had a group of five people. And it was all based on what was going on everywhere else. So we did have, put something together back then as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the fact that, I mean, maybe it seems like people aren't interested in it. But this is, I've been counting, probably three or four times this has come up.
This is the third. Third for me.
Yeah, okay. So maybe I'll, okay. So would the board want to, do they have any concern? I mean, do you want to share your feelings on it one way or the other at this time? Or I'll give you the out on that and say.
No, it's not, it's really, we have to see, we represent the public. And if the public comes out and they show support for something, and others may have the opposite view, and that's fine. Maybe there's always a common ground. That's why you can write a local law that will address or mitigate issues that people are concerned about while still allowing the chickens for the people that want to have them. So I think there's that middle ground.
Right.
So I, you know, I think I personally, I don't, I won't speak for the board. But I mean, we've heard enough support tonight and with the letters we've received that I would say we follow this process forward. That would be my, my thought.
Because I mean, just the fact it's, we're here three times talking about it.
Yeah.
At least, there's got to be some interest somewhere. Otherwise, this thing would have been dead and gone a long time ago.
Yeah.
And do you have a ballpark on what it would cost? Like the draft and to do everything you're, you just, you brought up the fact that there is a cost to this.
No, there is. But it's, you know, I can't even ballpark that right now.
500, a thousand bucks?
Not that, yeah, that'd be a cap. That would probably five to eight, I would imagine. But not even that much. I'd say maybe 500 this time. Because we have a draft.
Yeah.
So to me, we have half the work, if not more, done. And you guys can correct me if you think I'm wrong.
Yeah, if I remember correctly, when we, when we first did the law drafting, there was this committee. And there were a handful of things they looked at, right? Based on things that we heard.
Yes.
When we brought it forward, and then it was when we got to that public comment, there was nothing there. So I think that's maybe where we thought, oh, maybe we did all this and maybe it wasn't a good idea.
And it was advertised?
Absolutely, as always, as they all are.
And that's what I wanted to make sure we're clear about, too, is the process will be at our next meeting in September.
So the draft of the law will be ready for the public to view. And then we will look at it as a board, too. And if we want to make any amendments, we could do it that night. But we would then look at it and set a public hearing for the next, the following month. You have to have, it has to be timed that way. You can't set a public hearing this evening.
Right.
Because you have to have the law in hand, ready to go to do that. So we don't have that. So we have to do this this month. We would have it to be viewed in September and talked about in October.
So the view would be, take a couple of months off. Mark it on your calendar, first Tuesday of October.
There you go.
Would be when we meet, you know, we would like people to.
I get the emails, so I'll.
There you go. There you go.
We'll talk about the firehouse. And then when all these guys can show up and say, yeah, we want chickens, too.
I like goats. I actually like goats. We can do that. Okay, so I don't think we need anything formal, right?
Is there anybody, anybody else on chickens?
No, just as you said, you know, there would be a process. You know, if the board were to do this, it's actually an amendment to the zoning law. So it has to be by local law. It would be a change in the allowable uses of a district involving more than 20 acres, which is a type one action under SIKER. So, you know, there are just steps in the process that the village will have to, to follow if the decision is made to amend the zoning law to permit the keeping of chickens. And, but the first step is to get a local law that would be introduced to the community that would then be available at the village clerk's office in advance of the public hearing. So people could review it and come to the public hearing, being able to meaningfully comment on that draft.
Okay. So is anybody on the board opposed to doing that? I think, you know, my personal opinion is to go forward with the legislative process. Are you guys all, okay? So that is what we will do. So we will start the process. And Kathy, I will probably reach out to you for those things we talked about, some of those specific things. And maybe I could even get the committee back together. And we will go over what we had done the first time. And then, you know, amend that a little bit. All right, thank you so much, everybody, for talking about that. Okay, I'm going to move on to item only on number two now. Wow. Consider resignation of Jason Johnson, police chief, effective July 5, 2023. I'll just say that we wish Jason well. He was with us for a couple of years. But he got a great opportunity to go work with the Attorney General's Office. And we wish him well. So can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Nick is first. Second is Michelle. And roll call, please.
Trustee Matulitz?
In favor.
Trustee Ginnan?
In favor.
Trustee Farrakhan?
In favor.
Mayor Denine?
In favor. Item three is consider resolution to affirm Mayor Denine's appointment of Todd Pucek, a host to the part-time position of police chief at a rate of $30 per hour. You may be familiar with this appointment. Todd was with us for many, many years at the village of Altamont. And I thank him so much for coming back to be our interim part-time police chief. Very grateful. Could I have a motion, please? Michelle is first and second.
I'll second.
Oh, hi. Who should I go with? Nick, I'm going to go with you. You're closer to me. Nick is second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Matulitz?
In favor.
Trustee Ginnan?
In favor.
Trustee Farrakhan?
In favor.